I will now call to order this work session of the Moore County Board of Education. It is Monday, April 27th at 3:00 PM. We have all members of the board present and accounted for. Would you please join me in the pledge of flags?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Chair, would you like an approval over the agenda?
I'm doing it out of order.
So move.
I did not have that right in front of me. So we'll have a moment of silence. Ms. Thompson, any comments?
Yes, thank you. We have lost another dear member of our Moore County school family. So we just want to keep the family in our thoughts during this moment of silence, please.
Entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Our motion carries seven oh. Alright, so at this point, we are looking for discussion led by Dr. Grimacy and staff over the large amount of money which is headed most gratefully to Moore County schools. We have lots of areas where it may be used and we have lots of areas where it may not be used. So this gives us time to contemplate and to receive best directive from the superintendent and staff. So, Dr. Grimacy?
Madam Chair, at this time, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Tim Locklear, who'll be chairing a panel with Mr. Andrew Cox, Mr. John Barath, and Ms. Amanda Dixon, who've been our lead team on putting this plan together under some pretty challenging circumstances, not having known exactly what that final amount was with S or three until just recently. So, Dr. Locklear, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're going to turn it over to you at this time. We currently have no video in here, so we just need to get the presentation up on the large screens.
Yes, sir. While Mr. Eckler's doing that, just as noted as part of the presentation, Mr. Cox is going to lead us off, give us a little background information again on S or two and S or three, and little information about those, and again, hitting on that essential question that has to be aligned when we're looking at this planning budget of are these programs, are these resources preparing for responding to preventing the spread of COVID-19? So I'm going to let Mr. Cox begin our presentation. I appreciate the opportunity to share this plan with you. Mr. Cox?
Mr. Locklear, I might add, you have just missed your chance to say, "I am the all great and powerful Oz coming into us." We've never had this sort of format, so hopefully everyone will be able to hear well, both on the live stream and here within the audience. Thank you.
So do we have the video up, or do I need to hold right now?
No, we have the PowerPoint visible for board members and the audience that we have.
Alright, great. Thank you, Dr. Layer, thank you, Dr. Locklear, Dr. Grimacy, Madam Chair. As Dr. Locklear mentioned, I'll just talk a little bit about the background information and lead us off here. Today, we are talking about the Elementary and Secondary Emergency Relief Two and Emergency Relief Three funding plans for Moore County schools. As part of S or two, which is part of the Coronavirus Response Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, Moore County Schools is expected to receive $7,855,098. We do have to apply for these funds. Funding application is due by May 7th to have access to these funds prior to July 1, 2021. This is a federal funding application, and it's held to the same standards as all other federal grants and applications that we have to submit. S or two is one-time funding, which expires on September 30th, 2023. The second part of the application is related to the S or three, or the Elementary and Secondary School Emergency Relief Three funding, which was part of the American Rescue Plan. And Moore County Schools is estimated to receive $17,575,450 as part of S or three. We'll talk about the allowability of uses of S or two and three, and S or one a little bit. But I will go ahead and note that there's one exception to those allowability of uses, and that is that we have to spend a minimum of 20% to address learning recovery through evidence-based interventions that respond to students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And that amount, that minimum amount, is $3.5 million. I mentioned, this is a federal funding application, and again, it's held to the same standard as other federal grants. We do have to apply by May 7th to have access to the funds prior to July 1, 2021. And the S or three portion of the funding is one-time funding, which will expire on September 30th, 2024. There's been some question as to the due date of when we have to submit our application to the Department of Public Instruction. This is a slide from one of the many technical assistance webinars in the Federal Programs Area at DPIs provided to federal program staff, school finance officers, superintendents, and other school staff over the last few weeks. And you will note there that S or two application opened on April 1, and it has a due date of May 7. The S or three funding application opened the week of April 12th. And again, there is a due date, as I mentioned, of May 7th to submit the application for receiving funds for S or two and S or three.
Can I ask a question? When were these applications? When was the date that we received notice that the application was opening up? Do you understand what I'm asking?
Yes, sir. I can't give you an exact date, but the State Board of Education approved S or two about a week prior to the April 1 opening. I can't give you an exact date, I have to go back and find that. And then the S or three was about a week after that, so it was about a week before the April 12th opening of that application, is when we got notice of when those applications would be opening.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Cox, how, when did we get notification of what our amounts were going to be?
The amount for S or two, I'd have to go back and look, I would guess it was mid-March, maybe a little earlier than that for S or two. S or three came out the same time that we were told when the funding application would open for S or three. They did not release that to us until after the State Board had already approved the application and the alignment policies for S or three. So S or three was much later than the S or two amounts.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So just to recap, I know we've talked about this before, but just to recap, the allowability of uses for the funds for S or two and S or three, the main question is, Dr. Locklear alluded to, and we've talked to before, and all the guidance from federal programs area says, we have to be able to answer these three questions, is what we're trying to do preparing for, is it responding to, or is it preventing the spread of COVID-19? And if it does, these additional items, or these categories of items, federal programs area has said would be allowable for use of S or two and S or three. And just those areas, just to go over them, are addressing learning loss in summer learning programs, facility repairs and improvements, for example, HVAC upgrades and improved air filtration or air movement to clean the air to prevent or reduce the spread of COVID-19. Principal, excuse me, providing principal leaders with resources to help respond, help them respond to COVID-19, and resources to support coordination improvement of the pandemic response, again, its response to COVID-19, staff training to help to respond and prevent the spread of COVID-19, educational technology that's in response for preventing the COVID-19 most likely response, there are mental health services that respond to COVID-19, maintaining current staffing levels in response to COVID-19, supporting the school nutrition program, as well as providing additional sanitation and personal protective equipment and supplies that help us respond to and help prevent or reduce the spread of COVID-19. At this time, I will turn the presentation over to Dr. Locklear, Mr. Barath, and Ms. Dixon, and they'll walk through more detailed, the more detailed plan for S or two and S or three at this time.
Thank you, Andrew. Before we take a few minutes to walk through the planning, the plan, the budget plan for our S or two and S or three funds, I would just like to note what our overarching planning priorities were. As we looked at the various needs and requests, as we got feedback from our principals, as we worked with departments across the school district, what were the overarching planning priorities? And it really can be narrowed down to two things. First, as we look at responding to and preventing and preparing for COVID-19, responding to learning recovery through evidence-based interventions that respond to students' academic, social, and emotional needs. And then the second overarching planning priority, as we put this plan together, was addressing the capital needs that are appropriate for preparing for, responding to, and preventing the spread of COVID-19. And so we go to the next slide. We'll start out with our smallest percentage of this planning budget that we're presenting to you this afternoon, is from mental health and a sexual education, which represents 2% of the planning budget that we're sharing with you today. And there's four items here, I'll quickly walk through those. The first is a frontline mental and behavioral health tracking system. It's $32,000 over two fiscal years to provide this system for our nurses, our counselors, our social workers, in order to document and track mental and behavioral health information. The second item here is $275,000 over three fiscal years of the grants, to have contracted mental health service providers, primarily psychologists, to help perform required testing and assessments required by federal law for whether or not students would qualify for sexual education or sexual children's services. Paired with that, over two fiscal years, is $40,000 to provide stipends or hourly rate of pay for individual education plan team members, EC team members, either teachers, counselors, and others who would be given some stipends over the summer to come in and help with this backlog of testing and looking at whether or not students qualify for EC services. And then finally, $184,500 for the Panorama Education Survey Platform, which we have used in the past, and continue to use, to monitor and get feedback on climate and culture of our schools, both from the staff perspective and student perspective, to monitor social emotional health of students, and as required by S or, to continue to get stakeholder feedback in using this platform to do so. The total impact of that over three fiscal years is $531,500. And again, that represents 2% of the planning budget. We go to the next slide. The next percentage, 10 to 11% of our planning budget, is from education technology, and this represents several items. The first, Chromebook refresh, 3,800 Chromebooks at a one-time purchase of $1,300,000. This would be in the first fiscal year of the grant. This would be replacing refreshing Chromebooks that are due to be refreshed in Area 3, which is our element, excuse me, our middle and high, Poncharis High School, is Area 3, our middle school, is feed into Poncharis High School. The next item is device protection bags over three years, $137,000 for 3,000 bags to support primarily K-5 devices that we deployed over the last year due to COVID. The next item is $800,000, approximately over three fiscal years, to provide service for the 1,100 hotspots that we deployed as a result of COVID, to ensure that our students have access to the internet. The next item is Google G Suite Plus, which basically is our overall suite that provides various Google tools for education that we use as part of instruction in our school district, and as part of operations as well. And that's for an impact of $96,000 over three fiscal years. Next item is an item called Class Link. This is a software program that allows for the sign-on processes into our various systems. It also is something that can help monitor return on investment on the type of systems and software we're using, how much are we logging in, how much are we using it? And that's an impact of $128,000 over three fiscal years. The next item is a stream network infrastructure support. This is security software. This is an impact of $101,000 to the budget. And then lastly, mobile charging cards, 133 of them, to support our digital devices of an impact of $106,000. So that's a total impact, total cost of $2.7 million, again, representing across the 10 to 11% of the planning budget. The next area, we'll go to the next slide, which is allowable through S or, is providing principals with resources. This represents 10 to 11% of the total planning budget. This represents three areas here I'll share with you, walk through with you. The first, athletics and performing arts, and supporting those programs in response to COVID, and being able to support those programs at the same level we did prior to the impact of COVID, and that's an impact of $225,000 in support to all of our middle schools and all of our high schools, and support athletics, performing arts, extracurricular activities. The next area is $100,000 over the three years of the grant, to support a contracted federal programs grants compliance analysis. This would be someone who would help us make sure we're complying with the grant, this with federal grant, that we're being effective in our use in that, and help us analyze that as we walk through this over the next three years. Then lastly, the line item to sustain locally paid personnel in response to COVID, add 1.2 million over the last two fiscal years of this grant, these grants at 2.4 million. That represents a total impact of 2.7 million, again, 10 to 11% of the total grant.
Can I ask, what are the locally, the locally paid personnel, this 1.2 million dollars in years two and three? What is that? Who is that?
That would include, I'll let Mr. Cox lean in on this, but this is to maintain our current level of services, whether you're talking about social workers, psychologists, counselors, whether you're talking about providing teachers to schools, but it's basically to maintain the current level of services that we have, and to put some monies in the grant to ensure we're able to do that.
So, what we're doing, because we already have the 1.2 million dollars, I guess, this year, are we saying we're not going to get it from the county next year? We're going to get it from this grant, and therefore lower our budget? Is that what we're saying?
No, sir.
Dr. Locklear, Dr. Locklear, I would suggest you allow Mr. Cox to answer the question.
Yeah, I'll suspend my question.
No, it's okay, no, it's a good question, Mr. Levy, thank you. Mr. Cox?
Dr. Locklear did a great job of answering the question. Right now, we're paying approximately $1 million of locally paid staff from the S or one funding, and we'll have that amount for fiscal year '22. And this continues to carry that over into '23 and '24. At that point, if we don't have sufficient funding from the county to maintain that, there will have to be cuts or attrition, move those employees into positions where staff may have vacated over that time.
Dr., Mr. Cox, would you please explain why we're using, remind the board why we're using that million dollars this year to sustain existing services? Why are we doing it this year? Therefore, that'll answer Mr. Levy's question about why it will be needed in the next two years.
Well, for the, one, to stabilize the budget, the uncertainty, the volatility of COVID-19, as well as the lack of funding from the county to support the current level of staffing as it currently exists.
Okay, that instability is a result of the, let me go ahead and answer the question. The reduction of about 400 students would have forced a substantial reduction in programs and services and staffing because of the loss of state funding based on that loss of student enrollment. Is that true or false?
That's true.
Okay, so with that, this is money that's there now to cover an expense which the staff is observing at this time. Should those 400 students materialize in the future, then does the grant program allow the staff to come back and redeploy this money should we find that we no longer need it on these lines?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so that's a good teaching point for the board at this point, because there are some allocations here that are based on what we know today, but when the board takes action on this next week, that doesn't handcuff the board to return later on should we find that that need is no longer there. Those funds can be adjusted to some other expense, as long as we do it early enough to spend the money before time runs out. Is that, is that accurate?
Yes, sir. You're exactly accurate, that as we work, this is the foundation for our application, which is why we're seeking the board's endorsement of that, but certainly as we move through the three years of the grant, there'll be, there'll be times where you're adjusting, and you may find that something didn't cost as much as you anticipated, and we're able to adjust that and use that for another need that's been endorsed by the board.
How'd I do, Mr. Levy?
Pretty good, except for one question. Do we need the federal government's approval to redeploy?
Yes, you work through the total, as part of the grant's process, if there was a change or shift or a budget transition, that would have to be worked through the federal program process and approved by the federal program group, not in North Carolina Department of Public Instruction.
You're right, so our contact in that process is the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction? Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, so it is the federal government, but the federal government designates that role to the DPI, and so we need essentially get DPI's permission to make such an adjustment.
I was basically asking about permission, whether it's the feds or the state.
We do need to get permission, but we're finding that although the deadlines are pretty tight, we do have a lot of assurances from DPI of support and quick turnarounds.
Thank you, thank you, Dr. Grimacy.
Mr. Levy, if I could, just build on your question for just a minute, I think it'd be helpful later on, because we'll come back later if there are any questions that we miss along the way. Mr. Locklear, if you could, Dr. Locklear, if you could, please. The athletics and performing arts, the statement was a good one, but what is it that makes this urgent? Why is this allocation there? What's, what is this doing that wasn't done? What impact did COVID have on athletics and performing arts to justify $225,000?
Well, with the impact of COVID-19, our athletic programs, middle school and high school, our performing arts program at those levels, our clubs and activities at all levels, we're not able to sell tickets, we're not able to have their normal events where they would have been able to provide resources at an optimal level for these programs, or to fundraise for whatever club or activity. And so this is in response to that, in response to COVID, in order to bring them up to that level so they can move forward, and noting that we don't have that in future years. This is an immediate response to the impact of COVID.
So is it accurate to say that this, this pattern over these three years shows that we have confidence that by FY '23 and FY '24, these programs will be back up on their feet, they'll be earning gate receipts, they'll be doing their fundraiser, traditional activities that raise funds, and they'll no longer need that money after the coming year?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Chair.
So we'll go to the next, I'm sorry, another question?
No, sir.
Okay, we'll go to the next slide. Again, this is the next, you know, one of the major focal points of the grant and funding, is addressing learning loss. This represents the second largest percentage of the planning budget at 30 to 31%. A few items here I'd like to walk through with you. First is a modest investment in comprehensive professional development for grades K through 12. This is a $227,000, three-year part of the planning budget for comprehensive professionals of grades K through 12, really supporting growth of our teaching staff and core instruction in order to address learning loss and respond to the learning needs. in order to address learning loss and respond to the learning needs of our students. The next is a, a one-year cost over the, the budget of $943,000 for an, for the iReady universal screener and responsive learning software. Upon your endorsement of this planning budget, we plan to bring to you in June and talk to you a little more in detail about the process for identifying this universal screener that involved our teachers and our principals and a little bit more about what the iReady system provides for our teaching staff and our principals. But a universal screener identified where the, how our students in grades K through eight have mastered standards and where their learning needs are. And this box of learning software is part of iReady, gives a lot of works and strategies and systems in that software to respond to the students' learning needs, and our teachers really, really like that. So again, that's an impact of $943,000. The next item is the only place you see us recommending adding full-time personnel as part of this budget, or as we've also heard described as pellets. And that's adding additional teacher assistance to second grade. Currently, our allotment formula allotts teacher assistance based on the number of teachers in grades kindergarten and first grade. You take those number of teachers, you multiply times 75%, and that's the total number of TAs we allot to our elementary schools. We're recommending as part of this planning budget that we extend that into the second grade. And we extend that allotment formula based on the number of teachers in second grade based on what we're currently projecting. That would be about 35, 38 teacher assistants each year. We're projecting that out and planning for that for two years of this planning budget. So 1.5 million each year for a total of 3 million. The final year of the grant, we're recommending that we go back to where we're currently sitting and take that down, back down to our current allotment formula, which is in our current budget. Therefore, we're not looking at a funding cliff at the end of the budget. We, you know, our, our staff strongly recommends how powerful and impactful having additional teacher assistance can be for our youngest learners, for small group instruction, for intervention, for responding to their learning need. The next area that's part of this addressing learning loss planning budget portion is summer school, which is required by House Bill 82. And it's the summer extension learning recovery. We're calling it our Power Up Summer Academy. We look forward to walking through a little more information about our summer program at Monday's board meeting with you. But we're looking at an impact over two years of 3.5 million dollars to provide those summer programs. And then lastly, one or a couple of different educational software items that are specifically in addressing learning loss. The one which is, which is known as a puzzle, which allows us to have interactive strategies to use with videos and our teachers really have responded very positively to. And then the second is an analytical program for a data dashboard known as Power School Analytics that will mesh with our student information system and allow us to have a user-friendly data dashboard for our teachers and administrative staff and district leadership to monitor the data around these strategies, monitor the data and performance of our students and respond to it actively. So the total impact here in addressing learning loss, 30 to 31 percent of the total planning budget is 7.8 million dollars. And before I turn it over to Mr. Barath to talk about the largest portion, which is the next slide, Laura, of our planning budget, which is capital projects, 45 to 46 percent of the total planning budget. Just, just again emphasizing that as John worked through this and worked with our team on this, looking at that essential question of, of what capital projects help us prepare, help us respond to or prevent the spread of COVID-19. So, John?
Before you move on, yes, let's see if there are questions about that previous. I know I've got one. Ms. Thompson?
Okay.
My question, Dr. Locklear, is going in, we know that, that there is a minimum of 20 percent that has to be used to address our student achievement recovery. So as we, as you prepare this information to send to us via your slides that you're presenting, would, is there an easy way that you can go through the line items to clearly denote the specific sections? Or if you're saying all of these you feel will be applicable to student achievement recovery, that's fine, but to clearly see the line items as to which ones definitely will fall into that 20 percent or greater recovery of student achievement would be helpful?
Yes, ma'am. I would, I would note that Slide 10, addressing learning loss, is what we, we specifically say is part, part of that. So that represents 30 to 31 percent of the total grant with a minimum that we're required at a minimum to have at least 20 percent of, of the Brady Grant. So that's, that I would identify as the specific connection to that percentage.
Yeah, I understand this slide, but the previous slides, did, do we feel that any of those items were specifically for our student recovery? And if not, that's fine. I, I was just trying to keep up with what we feel like is going to be geared towards student recovery.
Well, yes, ma'am. It's a great question, great point. I think certainly we can go back through and, and identify any that we think have a connection to that. I think many of the ones we've already noted have an impact.
Yeah.
I think that's a great, that's a great question, great point, Ms. Thompson. Whether you're talking about education technology, whether we're talking about mental health, EC services, or some of these overall resources providing for principals, I think they all have an impact and connection. So yes, ma'am, we certainly can go back through and, and kind of note that and give you some feedback on that.
Thank you.
If I could add, Ms. Thompson, with your permission?
Yes.
What we'll do is after the board renders feedback today, when we come back next Monday for a final walkthrough and, and offer for the board's consideration, we'll put asterisks or pound signs or something on these. The thing that I think the board can carry away today is that we feel very confident that we greatly exceed that minimum standard, and we'll just make sure that on Monday we're able to illustrate that.
And for me, Dr. Grimace, I, I, I mean, I look at, again, as, as we've been talking through different presentations that we've had from different schools, we, we keep in mind the whole child. And, and working in healthcare, as I do, I know that the social work and the mental health recovery, all of that is part and go, and, and goes and is go in alignment with student achievement because some are behind in, in those areas, and they've had to reach out and they've had to have, have extra help. So just for, for those listening, it would just be helpful, I think, to, to try to tie all of that into student achievement recovery.
Very easy to do, ma'am.
Thank you.
Mr. Dennison?
Yes. I would like to see exactly the resources that each of our restart, restart schools is getting from this program. We've got a golden opportunity to do something for these kids that we've never had to do before. And so I want to know, and that would include additional classrooms for PK, any additional resources or programs specifically, school by school, because these schools we've got to take care of, they're, they're primary, they're holding us down more than anything else. And now's our opportunity to do the best we can, at least for two or three years, to bring these schools up to speed and help these kids that, the majority of which are economically disadvantaged. Thanks.
Mr. Dennison, I, I can answer one of your questions. The only additional staffing that we're adding is the second grade teacher assistance. So there's no additional staffing at all, and even those positions are timed out for two years. So that one we can answer today. I also just want to let you know, this has been a heavy lift to get to today, and to do a school-by-school breakdown is going to be dependent on a lot of factors that are not available to the staff here in the next five days.
Okay. The, the only schools I'm interested in a restart, and I know in both Robbins and Aberdeen, we do have room for another pre-K class. And to me, we all know how important pre-K is. Why don't we have those, even if they're for two years? I mean, it's got, it's got to help an enormous amount.
Okay. So that would be, that would be some input you'll have here in the discussion to come because that's not here. Then you would offer that and you and your colleagues can decide if, if that's something the majority wants to direct the staff to do. We'd have to take money away from something else to do that.
Understood.
So that would be budget sausage making that would have to happen after the presentation.
I agree.
But, but if I'm correct, our, the addition of that second pre-K program at Aberdeen is not dependent upon COVID funds. That's a program, a process that's already underway with registration actually already going on.
I would think that would have a lot to do with learning.
Yeah, well, it definitely does. We've all agreed, Mr. Levy and I've heard from every restart school that pre-K programs make a difference. But my point is that that's not something we necessarily have to address through COVID funds because Aberdeen is already qualified for that second pre-K, and that funding does not come through this direction. It, it comes elsewhere.
Well, I'd be willing to check to see if, whether or not we could do that because that, to me, that's one of the most important things we need to do.
Well, like I said, it's already, I think it's already underway. I do have one question, and that is about the, the manpower that we are considering with this. Since I do remember well, and some of you may also, the days of a teacher assistant in every grade, K through three, and what a difference it made, especially in that tested grade level of, of third grade. And knowing that it's our third graders this year who will be fourth graders next year who also, you know, begin to be in the tested realm, is, is more thought given to, and maybe, it's going to be coming up because I know we're going to see the rest of the presentation, but the potential for a teacher assistance in third grade and/or even fourth grade as a possibility to, to further help our children with learning loss?
Madam Chairman, the, the staff had all those options to consider, but we have a finite amount of money for a certain amount of time, and we need to look at, at what is needed in a short period of time that is something that's achievable. The number of teacher assistants that we think we could hire with individuals knowing that there's a chance they may not be employed for more than two years is a factor the staff considered as to what can be sustained. So can we, if we set aside the money, can we find the teachers? Mr. Levy has pointed out that, that he's aware that, of the research that does exist, that class size reduction, you, you, you've got to really make a bite in, in class sizes to get down to a point where you can argue to a school board that it's going to affect outcomes. And so without getting into all the details that the staff had to go through, multiple, multiple of details here in just this last month to make the determination what we offer today, we tried to look at where we could get the biggest bang for the buck in the shortest period of time, but not incur so much expense that we couldn't deliver on what our promise was. The lasting effect, the most lasting effect that we have will be in the targeted areas we've identified here. And so if we start to look at, if you look at just the teacher assistance for second grade, that is a very big ticket item for a, a position that doesn't cost as much as teachers. So if we add teachers, if we add more, if we go to another grade level, you have to double this amount, okay?
Understood.
For every, you know, figure for every grade level, you add another $3 million. And, and if it's teachers, it's going to be more expensive. So we had to make some difficult decisions along the way. So it's open to criticism, but the board would then have to look at some other expense here and then decide something you're not going to do in order to make something else happen. So we've had those difficult decisions and, and I leave that open to board members, but this is the staff's final call on this to offer to the board. So if the board wants to do some restructuring, I know the time is short, but the time has been short for the staff as well.
I understand, understand. And probably the greater challenge is going to be to find people who qualify to be teacher assistants within our community because from what I can tell, everybody is having trouble hiring.
Correct. And those decisions were had, those discussions were had, yeah.
I just, I wish we could, of course, the General Assembly cut us back on teacher assistance many years ago, but those, those were very beneficial in the early childhood classrooms, so. Yes, sir. Mr. Hensley?
I just have a comment on the fourth item. This really isn't a budget matter, but it's something that I've, I've heard from several people about the, the summer school. And this is just something I'd like addressed because I heard there's going to be a Power Up brief next week. I look forward to seeing that. But please make sure it addresses the, the following. I've had concerns, and I share the concerns, that the wrong people may attend summer school, that the children that need it the most may have parents that don't push them to attend summer school. So just make sure next week when this is briefed that we have some sort of outreach program to get the, the students in most need to attend our summer school. Thank you.
No, that's, I, I want to, I want to affirm and invalidate, sir, that's, that's a very important challenge. And also just encouraging some very tired people to work this summer. So getting the children to, to, to come to the program is a high priority and be a major feature of the presentation. Thank you.
Any other questions before we move on to capital?
I do, but I'll wait till the end.
Okay. All right. Move back to Mr. Barath.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Locklear and Chair Carter. So the next, as Dr. Locklear mentioned, the big portion of the funding is the capital projects, which accounts for 45 to 46 percent. A lot of these projects are going to look very familiar to the board. You've seen them identified in your capital plans. And going back through those, what we did was we identified and pulled out those that would qualify for the SRS Two and Three categorical requirements of response to prepare, prevent, and reduce the spread of COVID-19. And so there's a couple of slides that has the projects identified here for the presentation. And attached to the executive summary is a single-page document that identifies these projects. So you can see on this first slide, a lot of these projects, again, you've seen in your approved 18-month capital outlay plan. Going to the next slide, you will see continuation of these that go all the way down through inclusive of the tracks at Pinecrest and Northmore. So everything on that previous slide and this slide are directly out of the approved 18-month capital projects of the items that would qualify to come off of that need list and be placed under a funded opportunity through the SRS funds. The next slides of items are not from that list, but they're from the capital needs list that was presented to the board identifying the needs at every school that built the overarching need of funds and projects for the schools. So here you can see some items such as water bottle filling stations, kiosks, canopies, and tables for outdoor eating and learning. You see return of condensate line repairs, split system air conditioning where there is no air conditioning, and improvement to systems at various schools. Next slide, please. And so going through this exercise and looking at every opportunity of funding for capital needs and working through each and every school on the timeline, keeping in mind that we may have needs for mechanical system improvements, but they will not recur for potentially eight to 10 years out. It is not ideal to address those right now since they are in good working order and performing in compliance. So at the end of this list on the bottom, what you see is also a plan for activity buses. So with the implementation of our centralized maintenance program for activity buses, the purchase of six activity buses over three years will allow the replacement funds collected to accrue and replace one bus per year for the foreseeable future. So this jumpstart allows the plan of centralized maintenance and operation, the activity buses, to build those funds and implement a replacement of one bus a year, supported solely from the program.
And how will those funds, how will those funds be built, Mr. Barath? While the federal dollars are being used to kickstart the program, how will the local funds be built so that it can be self-sustaining thereafter?
Yes, Dr. Grimace, the rate per mile charged to each school based off of usage on a monthly schedule is what will support it. And the rates of the charges for the buses parked at the schools and then the rates of the charges for schools that use buses from another site. So with the implementation of the activity bus program, within each charge, there's a required replacement per mile fund that we would set aside and and allow to accrue over the years to build that fund to continue and add to for the replacement of buses.
And that has not been done in the past, true?
Has not been done in the past.
So that is the behavior change that led to so much frustration. But if action is going to be taken to remedy that going forward, then, then there is a forthcoming plan. And what we've done is, is we've looked at this as an opportunity to see how the board responds to this because that will affect the rates that we charge to the teams and the clubs and the groups that will be using these activity buses going forward. Is that, is that an accurate summary?
Yes, it is, sir.
Okay. So this one's tied to a plan to address the frustration the board has expressed that will remedy this going forward and is a way that we can jumpstart that. And that doesn't mean that we won't do it, but it means that it'll soften the blow to the teams and the clubs and all the users of these buses going forward that the rates will not have to be quite as high. But nevertheless, there will be an accrual fund that at the end of this six-year period of time will be able to fund annual replacement of activity buses for the foreseeable future without any supplemental requests for funding going forward. Is that correct?
That is correct.
All right. Let me add at this point, to please clarify, how is it that the outdoor tracks qualify for this funding?
The outdoor tracks qualify in response to wellness, outdoor classroom activity, physical activity for the students in response to COVID and the prevention of. And so by repairing and restoring and reopening the tracks, you provide that opportunity. Items such as extracurricular, walking classrooms, of course, the athletic programs and others.
And we have verified that with DPI?
That has been proposed and confirmed.
Okay. Thank you.
And the activity buses serve a long, similar function. It provides the opportunity for students to go in a vehicle to off-campus instruction opportunities, of course, for participation by clubs and other athletic programs and other engaged activities outdoors at off-site locations. So those are the items. Total, in the bottom right there, for these capital funds is $11,427,500. As I mentioned, that a lot of these items you have seen in your previously approved capital projects over the next 18 months. And those items total about $5.7 million. So from the previous $8 million plus plan of capital project needs that the board had reviewed, this pulls $5.7 million of that out from that plan. It still has items in there that need to be completed that did not qualify. There's about $2.7 million of work on the board-approved capital plan that is not eligible for the SER funds. I will present greater detail on that to identify each item at your May 3 work session, presentation on those. But just to give you an advance heads up on that, what the impact of this has also on your capital-approved plans. If you go to the next slide, one other item I want to note here is, again, there are items that are not included that the board had approved on capital needs. And there's a couple of things just to remind you about the standards and that these are not qualified. The gymnasiums, the six school gymnasiums to install air conditioning in them. Again, we're not going to install air conditioning without insulating the roof, the windows, upgrading electrical service, and other work that needs to be done in a coordinated effort with all of that. The air conditioning system would qualify because it would allow us to put a higher level of filtration system in there. But the work for the roof, the windows, and other integrated elements would not qualify. The air conditioning accounts for approximately 20% of the work that goes in to the full renovation or rehabilitation of these gymnasiums. Roof replacements, as I mentioned with the gymnasiums, a roof replacement does not meet the standards on either preparing for, preventing, and reducing the spread of COVID-19. And even some of the building renovation projects where we need to do overall improvements to the wind, replacing windows, replacing roof, replacing classroom walls and things along those lines would, for the same reason, not all of that qualify for the SER need projects. So this is a brief summary of the projects that are proposed under the capital. And before I turn it back to Dr. Locklear, I want to provide the board an opportunity if there's any questions or clarifications.
John, if I could, before we open it up for questions, let me just reaffirm something that you said. Board members, as you look to next Monday's meeting, John indicated, we'll show you some of the mathematics on the benefit. We are allowed, this is a rare federal funding opportunity where we're allowed to supplant. I mean, normally, that's not a consideration. So you've already picked up on the fact that we're able to supplant about, with the current presentation as it is, you've got a, a supplant of close to $5.7 million that's going to be available for you to look at. And Mr. Barath and I have looked at a couple of concepts that we're going to introduce to you at the work session that will be under no means, need to be decided upon quickly. But we're going to introduce some conversations about some creative approaches to using that $5.7 that you might want to think about. And unlike the current circumstance with a May 7 deadline hanging over our heads, we'll have a little bit of time to do that and perhaps sit down with the county commissioners and have some conversations about that next layer of projects that aren't included in the current substantial list of projects that are available to us. So stay tuned. We'll, we'll have some more detail on that that I think you're going to find very interesting next Monday. Okay, questions or feedback for John's portion of the presentation?
Mr. Levy?
What is the, what is the cost of the roofs? Just the roofs alone? That's not the 12.6, I assume?
The roofs for the six gym projects specifically, or for all schools?
Well, for, okay, you, to whichever schools you wanted to put new air conditioners in, whichever gyms you want to put new air conditioners in, what is the cost of doing the roofs, which is not available from COVID funds?
I, at this time, do not have that broken out. I only did analysis of the air conditioning component side. But I can introduce that information next Monday as part of the final present regulations.
I think that's a great question, Mr. Levy, that would fit right in with John's presentation next Monday as we look ahead at what to do with this supplant, that, the opportunity that we have.
Well, I'm, I'm, what I'm really asking is, do the roofs cost $5.7 million or less?
Yeah, that, that was going to be my question.
That's, that's really, that's really what I'm getting at because I'm not so sure. And by the way, we also have, and, and, and Dr. Grimacy, correct me if I'm wrong, we have a bunch of money which is, which is left over from the bonds, which is sitting with the county commissioners.
You're referring to the premiums?
Right.
Oh, the bond premiums. Oh, yes, sir. Yeah, yeah, the county has that.
And it seems to me that that might also be a source. Because one of my, one of my problems with this whole thing, I've got several problems with, with the whole, the whole thing, is that we're doing a lot of little things, but we're getting a big bunch of money, which we will never see again. And my hope is that we can do some big things that we could never do again.
What would be an example, sir?
Air conditioning, air conditioning, all the gyms. That's, that's one example. Building a, I don't know, building a new learning center at Carthage Elementary and, and, and being able to knock down some of the, some of, some of the problematic buildings there. You know, things, things like that. I'm just talking about, you've got a big lump sum of money and it's a shame to spread it around small, at small amounts, at small amounts all over. That's, that's my overall take. I would also hope that during the interim, the chair would convene the budget committee and that the budget, that this would be set to the budget committee for a, a detailed analysis. I might add that I got this in my inbox at about 1:45 today, okay? It's before a 3 o'clock meeting. I looked at it and I could barely digest it. It's very hard for me to digest, especially the, 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 the maintenance things without knowing, for instance, what is left out. We had a, a, a large series of priorities. What, not just what we pulled out of those priorities, but what was left with that $120 million? And what are we, what are we foregoing? I don't know. But clearly, we've got to make a, 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 a deeper analysis. I am concerned because I think, I know it's, I know it's tough. I know that the, the, the staff has only had about 30 days to, to come up with this. And I appreciate their efforts. But, but I think it would have been a good idea to have seen this a week ago. That's just my feeling. But I don't want to take away from the efforts of staff who have, I know, done a yeoman's job of getting this together.
Yeah, I think what I was trying to get Mr. Cox to confirm is that the actual amount that we received was not confirmed until a week ago Friday, if, if I'm correct, right before we met with the commissioners.
But my, my, one of the things is, we didn't, we don't have to know exactly how much we're getting to the penny. We knew that it was going to be somewhere in the nature of $20, $25 million, okay? So you can, you, you could plan for those sorts of things and then refine later. But I don't want to get too much into, and, and I, I don't want to, 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 to not congratulate the staff in doing what is an amazing job trying to put this together. It's just that I think there's a lot more work to do. And we need to take the time between now and May 7 to do that. And there is a committee to do that, of which I think this chair is the chair.
I am the chair, and I would say that, and it's not in the realm of the budget. I, I'm not, we don't have a budget committee. We have a superintendent's budget committee, which is led by Dr. Grimacy, Mr. Hensley, and Ms. Thompson and I served on that, on the superintendent's budget committee, which deals with the overall budget, which this is truly not a part of. But what you've got now is a week to digest this before we come back and discuss it again on Monday, before any action is taken. So I, I don't think it's come to us so short. I, I was not even at home to receive the email today. So this is my first view of this as well, and, and no preliminary view has been provided. So we now have the time to do this. And the questions that you are asking now are very good ones. And I, and I think that Mr. Barath will come back with, to us with that information requesting, you know, how much would it cost to actually do all those gymnasiums, as, as mentioned? I do find it interesting that you're suggesting we do some big project because I believe you were the one that, that was so concerned that we were only building schools to the southern end of the county. Why weren't we spreading it around and, and doing something at all the schools? So I have to applaud them for realizing that we are taking care of multiple issues at multiple schools and that we're going to see the effects and benefits of this COVID money throughout Moore County, not just delegated to one school.
I'm not, I didn't say, I didn't say just to one school, as a matter of fact. I use Carthage Elementary as an example because Carthage Elementary is a school that has some problems, I believe. I, I, I believe for many, many years, it's been talked about totally replacing the school. All right.
Correct. And, and those discussions continue. And since those, that would involve funds other than COVID funds, it's not something we really need to deal with at this point. The, the bond monies that are being held by the commissioners would have to be addressed separately with additional money to make those things happen. So I, I think that's in our future. And I certainly would love to see Carthage Elementary benefit from an excess of funding, which we normally don't have.
And it's, it's not, and it's not just Carthage Elementary. It's many of the schools around, which are, are older schools. And sometimes you can do some big things with that. That train may have, that train may have passed. But clearly, we can maybe take our, our HVAC project and make it happen. Because we're certainly not going to get $12, $12,690,000 handed to us on a silver platter anytime soon. And there is also one other thing, and that is also a, a, a pet peeve of mine, is that I would hope that there would be greater emphasis on the arts. We, we tend to, this thing tends to lump athletics and the arts together. The arts need a boost. And that, that helps kids who are not as academically inclined but are, are, are more culturally or artistically inclined. And that helps take care of some of the deficit with regard to COVID. So that's just, just my feeling on this.
Well, and I'm guessing there could be some kind of breakdown for how that art athletic money would go. They reached that amount based on some kind of deliberation, so perhaps we could get further explanation on that as well. Agreed, the, the theater programs at all three of the high schools and the middle school truly lost money last year since things were shut down as they were ready to walk on stage. And I know that it has been very difficult for them to recoup the losses it, it took for licensing and, and production expenses, scenery, costumes, and whatever that had already been spent. So I'm with you. I mean, I support the arts as well as athletics. So maybe we could get a little more information on how that, that money would be structured with it just going out of the principals to be able to, to replenish funding as, as needed.
And, and, and what do the, the arts teachers think that they need in order to help bring their, bring their programs up to snuff? I'm curious about that.
You know, I'm thinking what they need is help to be able to buy the license to produce another play is about where they're, where they're headed.
And it may be that they need the money to license a regular play as opposed to a junior play. I don't know. That's, that's up to them. I don't want to second guess what, what they need, or maybe they need a license to do one play each semester. I've, I've no idea. Or, or for scenery, whatever.
Madam Chairman, with your permission, could I interrupt?
Sure.
Okay. Could we ask Dr. Locklear to tell us how he arrived at the $225,000?
We surely could. Dr. Locklear?
Dr. Locklear, just, I know there's been engagement with the principals and the athletic directors and the principals representing the arts as, as well. How did you derive at the 225 and, and what at this early stage can we advise the board as to, in general, how, how principals will determine the allocation of funds between the arts and athletics?
Yes, sir. It was, Dr. Powers engaged with, with that work. And it's based on the number of teams, the number of clubs, the number of kids involved. And we could send out, maybe by the end of the day today, we could send out a little more detail on that. Dr. Powers has a, a plan for that, how those, those monies would be distributed. He's, I've just gotten noted, I just got noticed he's not available to join the meeting to talk about that in a little more detail. But we can actually send that out and share it with the board.
But the intention here was the extracurricular programs because the...
Extracurricular, performing arts, athletics, clubs as well.
But the classroom, the classroom curricular programs have continued to be funded. They, they are not at loss. They, they have received what they've always received because of the $1 million supplemental to back up, to keep us from having a loss of revenue this year. We've been able to sustain what we give to the curricular programs. Is that true?
Yes, sir. And this comes in there, our principals gave us feedback that they certainly needed.
So if we were to, if we were to allocate funds for, for the classroom, the traditional classroom curriculum materials, that would be over and above what we've done before. So this money here is to account for the funds that the extracurricular arts programs, the marching bands, the, the choir, after-school choir productions, the theater productions, that's where that money was lost. Is that correct?
Correct. Yes, sir. This is for the extracurricular, you know, the, the activities that are performing arts to our clubs or athletics, making sure that when we're... or athletics, making sure that when we're in response to COVID, they've got the same the same footing that they had prior to COVID.
Perhaps we'll have Dr.
So that's that's why we're requesting that.
Perhaps Dr. Powers then could weigh in with a few details on how this 225 will be distributed based on the work we've done to date. Thank you.
Are there other questions?
Yeah, I have a question for John. John, we got a lot of work here in a relatively short period of time. Are you going to be able to manage all this without any additional help?
Yes, we will have strategies in place. Of course, one of the greatest challenges is going to be the workforce. We're not the only school district that's going to be looking to do this. A lot of the surrounding districts will be doing similar activities and work. So we'll be working closely with a lot of the contractors that are here in Moore County to do this work, that have performed similar projects for our schools in the past, and also with those that are in close proximity. And then through the assistance with our maintenance department and the expertise that each of those technicians carries in their unique areas of responsibility, these projects will be able to have a close supervision and confirmation of execution. We also probably at some point be looking at opportunities to bundle projects to try to maximize the dollar as well as interest. So as we move through this and we are planning and we are engaging with the construction industry to find the best opportunities to meet the needs.
Thanks, sir. Now, are we we're we're having questions for the whole the whole presentation, correct?
Hold on, let's any other questions about capital?
We we were pretty much at the end. Dr. Locklear was just going to close out and open it up for questions.
I have some on capital. I've been waiting patiently over here.
Caldwell.
John, just a a question to you about the AC units. Have you guys ever thought about purchasing portable ones to help relieve some of the the air circulation in the AC unit, I mean, into the gyms?
Portable units are a temporary solution when there's an example of a system that fails. So that would be a short-term solution to provide a tempered environment while that main problem is being corrected. So however, through the use of these funds, it could become possible to purchase a portable unit to have on hand.
Okay, and then I had if you can go back to the the first page of capital projects. You had on there, let's see, just the replace central office HVAC system. As much as I know that it probably does get needed, I just wanted to know how that affects the children and how are we getting away with doing that for with this money?
I'll I'll answer that question, Ms. Caldwell, because we thought about moving that down because it didn't look good that it was there. But that is part of the approved priority list that the board has already approved. And the employees here just have as much value as everybody else, not more, but certainly not less. And so we didn't feel authorized to move that down just because it would look good, given that the board had already approved it. It's when you get down farther and we started adding projects that hadn't previously been added that we got a little nervous and we thought, well, we'll just go with what we would recommend if the board was looking at that. But those that first page, John, the cutoff is at the Northmore track. Everything above the Northmore track has the priority list has already been approved by this board. Now, some projects are missing from that because they don't meet the standards for the ESER funding. And the board, Mr. Levy, if you would, you can't be ignorant of that. You can't just take this money and go do whatever project you want to do. You have to be mindful of the guidelines and the requirements of the funding. You just can't do what you want to do. So.
No, and let me let me tell you something.
If I could just.
No, no, Dr. Grimacy. I'm not ignorant of that fact.
Okay.
What I am trying to do is exactly what you're trying to do. And what I am trying to do is to fit these things into the COVID funding. And by fitting them into the COVID funding, we're looking at things, for instance, for places like Carthage Elementary, for disadvantaged students who suffered the most during COVID. We're looking at at disadvantaged students who do not do well academically, but who may excel in the arts, and that we may be able to overcome the deficit of them not going to school and 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 not being attached to the school by by not just giving a little more money to the arts, but expanding the arts. So I'm very, very mindful of that, and I'm trying to be just as creative as you are. Thank you.
Okay. But I wish I could be more creative, actually, than than what we were in trying to follow the rules. I I'm going to steal John's thunder on something if I could, and then Ms. Caldwell will come back to your question. If you look at the total cost of of modernizing our gyms so that we can air condition them effectively with all the appropriate work to the roofs, the windows and everything else, John puts here that there's a cost of 12,690,800. Now, we just really this has just emerged in the last couple of days as we finalize the budget. But it just so happens that if you take the 5.7 supplant, and and we wanted to wait till Monday, but I'm just going to say this now so that you can be encouraged as a group. We've we've got about based on the plan as it's presented today, and that could change, there would be 5.7 million that the board has already authorized for the priority capital projects that is going to be saved. You can pull that out. It's available for you. John, what is the money that the commissioners currently have from the bond premiums that has not been allocated back to us? We've got 2.1 million, and so what's what's left from that?
If I recall correctly, I believe there was approximately 12 million in premiums.
Originally.
That's a round number. And so with the 2.136 allocation, that would be just under 10 million. So somewhere between 9 and 10 million, if memory serves me.
And so if you've got 5.7 million, then you need in order to get to 12 million, 12.7 million, you you need another $7 million, which is well within what the commissioners have. Now, it far be it from me to get too far ahead of this board and too far ahead of the commissioners. But since this topic has come up today, we were going to and we will come back and we will bring this up again. We were already putting together one of the concepts you could consider as you look at this, as you could take that savings that you've derived from this particular plan. And and should the commissioners desire to sit down and and talk about that, you have within your means right now the ability to get a lot of these individual projects at a lot of different schools that do, we can validate, do fit the ESER funding guidelines, and still, perhaps in very short order, do all six of those gyms. And both boards could work together on that. It's an opportunity for you. Now, there's other ways you could go, but that's something we were going to introduce to you next Monday, depending upon where you are today. So we didn't plan it that way, but that opportunity is there on the table, and and you can you can look at that. And we'll make that a concept for you. And we we might introduce another concept or two beyond that. But first things first, we we've got to make sure we're following the rules here, do the best we can for learning recovery, meet all the various needs that this money can accomplish, and then also make sure that all these capital projects are validated to align with the guidelines of the funding. So, John, excuse me for stealing some of your thunder next Monday, but I it looks like they're they're interested. And we'll we'll make sure it's part of the presentation.
Yes, sir, I will.
Back to Ms. Caldwell.
I'm good to go. I think Mr. Holmes had some.
Mr. Holmes.
Dr. Locklear, I have a question for you. It's back on slide seven regarding Panorama Educational Survey Platform. I'm on their website right here, and it says we've made all of our research-backed survey instruments open source and free to educators to use. Can you help me understand this? Because I I went on and I could download the surveys.
Yes, sir. That subscription pays for the survey platform in order to provide the surveys, in order to keep an archive of the survey data, in order to have data dashboards, if you will, at each school of the survey data. That that subscription, if you will, to the survey platform also provides us professional development and learning for our principals and our counselors to respond to the data we're receiving. So it it provides some of those tools that the free platform through Panorama doesn't doesn't provide. And I certainly we certainly can talk in more detail, Dr. Powers or Ms. Dabman certainly could go and.
We can show we we can show the difference between what what's available for free and what we get for the 61, 500. We can certainly break that down for you.
Okay. I had one question, and I just lost it. So I'll.
Take your time.
I'll yield.
Do you have another question?
All right. Any other questions at this point?
Let me just ask one brief question. Is this Panorama survey the same as the social emotional survey that was talked about last year and that had the all the questions about about sex and the like in it?
That was the Youth Risk Behavior Survey, the Social Emotional Learning Survey, and the the Climate Conduct Survey, which is an adaptation of the Office of Civil Rights Survey. Both were not the Youth Risk Behavior Survey.
Dr. Grimacy, though, correct me, but isn't isn't Panorama is a platform on which to create surveys?
It is.
It is not the survey.
No, it's not.
Okay, so we're we're in other words, if we're to approve this, we're not approving that survey.
No, no.
This is just a budget.
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah, it it is it is the platform upon which you could create multiple surveys. I I think our some of our dipstick surveys where they, you know, focusing on teacher satisfaction and approval at odd times during the year are done through Panorama. But that's just provides us with the ability to create them.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am.
Is that right, Dr. Locklear?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, are there other questions? Anything else about capital? Mr. Hensley? Or it doesn't have to be about capital.
You guys did an exceptional job of of anticipating my questions. So I just have an observation and a comment, if I could. My first my first comment is this. You guys went out of your way to explain the 5.7 million that out of the previously approved funding that's now available, and I appreciate you pointing that out. My question, I guess it is a question, my 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 only question is, on the other non-capital funding, is there any are there any items in there that were budgeted for or or tentatively budgeted for the upcoming budget cycle that this ESER funding displaces? For example, the Chromebooks, the Chromebooks come to mind.
Oh, yeah, that's a good question. Yeah, yeah, thank you for bringing that up. But let me yield to Mr. Cox, because in case you have a follow-up or something, he might.
Well, let me let me let me let me further clarify my question. I'm not looking for an answer right now. If that, you know, maybe that's something that's presented in next week's work session.
Well, it could be, but we also can answer we can also answer part of that today and and maybe all of it. Mr. Cox, I'm not going to or or Dr. Locklear, I think either one of you all might be able to assist Mr. Hensley with.
Yes, yes, sir. Specific to the Chromebook, Mr. Hensley, great question. That is something that we were looking at as a lease purchase as part of the digital learning fund. So this does allow us to have an outright purchase of that. Mr. Eklund will be when we bring this to to you, if you endorse this plan, and we we will bring a contract to you for your approval, where Mr. Eklund and Dr. Metcalf will go in more detail about our planning and how this impacts the long-term digital learning fund. So yes, sir, that does allow us to immediately respond to COVID with this purchase and then extend how we're able to use that digital learning fund to because down the road, we've got some cliffs with K-5 technology and devices. So yes, sir, some of these other technology software pieces, there would be things we'd have to find in other areas of our budget, but we're able to use these these funds. So it frees up other areas of local funding or state technology funding in order to, you know, be able to do other things.
But it but it extends those those funds. It does not it move then to other areas. These are ways, for example, in digital learning, this will allow digital learning to accrue. And so the next time we have to do a refresh, we'll have more local funding available to do that and extend and be able to support the one-to-one provision in grades three, four, and five. Am I correct? Or two, three, four, and five?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Are are we going from a lease to a purchase program through this?
No, we are always we've always been in a a lease arrangement.
Yes.
And we so one of the savings we had was going from three to four-year leases and buying more and getting more durable Chromebooks, if you remember from your budget presentation. So that that we will continue to use the same plan. Ms. Dr. Locklear?
Well, just just it's a little different here in this situation, Dr. Grimacy. The last two or three years, we went to lease purchases because they they it's because we can extend the life of our devices. And then we're able to, through a lease purchase, save money on the return of the instruments and things of that nature that we 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 found over the years. This specific request is an outright purchase.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Go ahead, proceed.
Yep.
I was glad to hear you mention the refresh that's going to be necessary on the two to five Chromebooks and possibly the iPads as well in K-1, because I know that's an expense that we have not previously had since we didn't have those devices in the early grades. So I'm I'm glad to know that we're giving some thought to being able to continue with with those devices.
If I might, Madam Chair, just to make sure we didn't leave Mr. Hensley hanging. Dr. Locklear, were there any other supplants outside of capital that would would respond to Mr. Hensley's question? That you could think of? And we'll we'll follow up on it, see if there's anything more next week. But anything else come to mind that might represent a supplant in a non?
Like I noted, yes, sir. Like I noted in the technology, some of these systems or services, we we'd have to provide in other ways, and this enables us to provide it through the ESER funding. So that helps local and state technology funds, and those are always strength. So this this certainly helps with with that. There's nothing that comes comes to mind immediately other than I think Mr. Hensley, you know, targeted in on an area that I would note, Mr. Cox may be able to identify some other areas.
Anything to add, Mr. Cox?
Just in general, in technology, most of these items were items that were picked up with coronavirus relief funding that the state gave us. So they were not necessarily in the budget for this year, that these are items that are going to have to be picked up somewhere else. So they were not in the budget for fiscal year '22 to where we make get a savings. I would point out, while this is peanuts in the $25 million scheme, the IT department was cut by the state $150,000 this year where they had to figure out how to source that additional $150,000. Again, it's just peanuts in the grand scheme of thing. But I did just want to point out that they were cut $150,000 by the state this year.
I would point out one other area, Dr. Grimacy, as I'm going back through reflecting for a second. And Mr. Hensley, the universal screener. In the past, we've used textbook funds to to provide for that. This extends what we normally have done with the universal screener with the responsive learning software targeting learning loss. And we'll certainly be diving a little deeper into more detail on that. We're planning to bring that recommendation to you, pending your endorsement of this plan, to the June board meeting, we'll be able to dive a little deeper.
So that being said, I guess my I guess here's my request. What I'd like to see for the next meeting is however you decide for the next meeting is however you decide to present it, you know, it could be item by item, that, that is a supplant, you know, put an asterisk next to it and say, this is displacing, I would like things clearly indicated if it's, if it's displacing existing funding, and then be prepared to speak about what, what the plan is to do with that existing funding.
Very good, sir. Yeah, good, good con, thank you, appreciate that feedback, that's good, we can do that.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Dennison?
Yes, Madam Chair, I have a few more questions about our economically disadvantaged children. With the restart schools, don't we have enough flexibility in our restart schools that would allow us to do things that cannot be done in other schools? When we consider what can be done to improve student achievement, we should look at all our plans, including capital for expense, and believe you me, I'm happy to see that we're going to be able to get a lot of capital items done. But I find it hard to believe that some capital expenditures are more important than providing additional resources and programs for our D-rated restart schools. And I, I just feel there's more we can do, and still stay within the boundaries, and if we can't do any more because of the boundaries, you can let me know after, you know, get a chance to look at it, thank you.
Did you have a question, Mr. Hensley? Yep.
Just a follow-up comment, I know that Mr. Levy asked when the principals of all the restart schools were here, what additional resources the restart schools needed, I, I think we heard very little, except pre-K.
Pre-K, that was it. Yeah, and, and, you know, the building, our, of our four, or three restart schools, the buildings at all three of them are obviously in good shape, so there's not going to be capital needs coming from those schools. So, you know, with the presentation, with the, the summer school plans, with the addition of teaching assistants in second grade, with other mental health issue, help, emotional help, those kind of things are going to be distributed, so the, the restart schools are going to be getting a portion of each one of those items as well. So it may be that, that things are, you know, apportioned differently, with more going to one school or another based on needs.
See, I, I don't know that, but the only thing I know is, these schools need help, and they need help a lot more than the other schools, and that we have to give them as much help as we can.
Mr. Levy?
Yes, just one other question. I do understand that we have a, I'll use Dr. Grimacy's term, a fiscal cliff with regard to the, with regard to the aides, okay? Is there any other additional fiscal cliff that we're looking at in year four, which, which we're going to have to fund, or we're going to have to go to the county, to the county commissioners and say, if you don't give us X amount more money, we will have to, we will have to make cuts?
That's a good question.
Very good question, Mr. Levy, thank you. Mr. Cox?
Yes, sir, as we alluded to previously, the line item under, providing principals and resources is to maintain the locally paid personnel and sustain that of $1.2 million in FY '23 and FY '24. That'd be the only other potential, and if those students come back, you know, that may go away where it may not be a cliff.
Is, is that in addition to the, it's the 1.2 million plus the cost of the second grade aides?
Yes, sir, the aides are in addition to that.
Well, the aides are about...
Then it just continues, because if you go to the survey software, you know, it's 600 and, or 60 some odd thousand a year, and then I assume you're going to want to use that in fiscal year '25, and if you look at those charts, right, I mean, I was going to say this when I was talking, but I truncated my remarks, but I'll say it now. If you look at that chart, it's got three fiscal years, and if, and if it, if it tapers off, then it tapers off, but if it, if it's in year, if it's in the fiscal year '24, then there's a, there's a, there's a ledge that's going to fall off. Now, you know, we're either going to find local funding, or it's understood, and so anyway, that's my only observation, is if, if it's there all three years, I would assume that there's an existing funding source, and we're going to need a funding source on the, on the back end too. If it tapers off, then it, then it tapers off.
I, I, I don't want to interrupt, if there was a response. Is there an, is the, we got 1.2 million for the locally funded people, and those are, these are basically who, in addition to the, in addition to the aides, who are the locally funded people?
As Dr. Locklear mentioned, it's some teachers, instructional support personnel, classified personnel, I can find exactly the classifications that we transferred over to the ESER I funding this year, if you need that.
Did we, did we pull that out of our general budget and transfer it to ESER I, to ESER I or ESER II, or whatever it is?
Yes, it was, it was, it was in the budget request to the county last year, which didn't get funded, and so these positions were pulled out of the budget that was not funded, and so that's where these positions come from, that we're trying to maintain current level of staff.
So were they in the budget that we're asking the county commissioners for, or just asked for it about two weeks ago? Was that $1.2 million in there?
No, it was not part of that, it was based on the formula there. We had already planned on moving staff over to the ESER funding, so it was not additional above the $2 million that the formula generated, no, sir.
Okay, so, so we've got, we've got about, how much for the aides is about, was it, did you say that was another 1.2?
It's 1.5 million for two years.
1.5, so we got about a 2.7, about a 2.7, about a $2.7 million fiscal cliff? Am I incorrect?
If I could clarify, Mr. Levy?
Yes, sir.
The teacher assistants, we're recommending that after the two years of that, that we're then going to back off of that and go back to our current funding levels for our teacher assistance, just at the K-1, so that would back off of that additional $1.5 million.
See, I'm just a simple man, because I believe that what's really going to happen at the end of that period is that somebody is going to say to the county commissioners, we're going to lose 30 aides for these poor children, and if you don't give us X amount more money, and, and we're going to have to look forward to that kind of a debate, because I, these are worthy, these are very, very worthy positions, and I don't want to get, I don't want to get anybody wrong here, I'm just trying to figure out, because I believe we are then going to go to the county commissioners, or go to some sort of other funding to keep them, because they are so worthy. So I'm trying to make sure that whatever fiscal cliff is we're creating, and we're going to create a fiscal cliff, that it is not so overwhelming that we're going to get a backlash from the county commissioners. My hope is that maybe this will continue, because it is a worthy thing, but I'm trying to figure out just how much, so is it only those two categories? Plus, I think another $100,000 for a psychiatrist, or am I incorrect?
No, there's no psychiatrists.
The $100,000 is contract, so that is directly in response to COVID, so that would not, I don't believe that would need to increase, because that's additional staff there, the instructional assistants or teacher assistants are additional staff, the only one that's maintaining is the 1.2 million.
Okay, so, so, so just those two categories, am I correct?
And it's primarily just the one, but yes, if you want to include the teacher assistants, would be those two, yes, sir.
Okay, well, hopefully we'll see what will happen in year four, but just, I just want to be, mostly I want to be upfront with everybody, including the county commissioners, so that, so that they'll know we're upfront, and, and, and they will understand that we're not setting a four-year trap, that this is really good for the kids.
Okay, if I could just, and Mr. Cox, please lean into this just a little bit, this is about COVID-19 pandemic recovery, and we have to be very candid with the public and with the county commissioners, that this isn't sort of a workaround to some sort of permanent structure, this is all for the next three years, I think we all agree on that. The 1.5 million, we need to be candid with anybody hired into those positions, that they're coming in for a temporary period of time to render assistance for those currently second and first graders that will be passing through second grade over the next two years only, and so in that third year, we need to be candid, and we've been through this before. We, we've effectively gone through that transition, because once upon a, when I first arrived, we had a teacher assistant in every classroom K through three, and we were in the process of backing up, so it's not like we haven't done this before, and we did not, we, we asked for the money, but we understood in the course of our priorities that we, we didn't, we weren't able to fund that, and we did an effective job of, of transitioning out of that at that time. This is for the period of time that we have, we looked at the needs that we had, I think that if you look at, using, coming back to Mr. Hensley's good point about if you look at year three, if there's still an expense there, we've got to remember that all these are supplemental needs related to the pandemic, so there's, it's not like we're going to stop offering professional, comprehensive professional development in K through 12, we're already spending some money, this is an additional 75, 920, that has to do with the additional demands on teachers and principals for training relative to the pandemic, that it would be logical to assume that if, not by the third year, certainly by the fourth year, we don't need that supplemental training, we can go back to what our current budget is. I'm not going to go through all of them, but I think it, it's, it's fair to ask the question, the additional software and analytics won't be needed, because there won't be as much federal reporting that we'll be doing beyond a certain point. So if we went point by point, and I hope Tim and Andrew, I'm not getting too far out of my, my knowledge zone here, but I think that, like, for example, in technology, you'll be able to see next week, and Mr. Hensley asked for us to show, well, where's that money going to go if it's supplanting? We'll show that next week, you'll see that in technology, you're going to be making good strategic use of your money that'll stretch your local dollars beyond the three-year period of time, and give you plenty of time to plan ahead. If you're planning out three to five years, as the board has been saying is something it desires to do, then you'll be able to see that and begin to sort of bring the airplane down slowly, instead of making sure you wait till the year where you crash. The thing I want to add is that with respect to the 1.2 million, Andrew, I want you to clarify something, please, for fiscal year '21, '22, we've already presented that budget to the school board and the county commissioners. You indicated that you were using ESER money to cover the $1 million for fiscal year '21, '22, but there's a zero here. So when you said ESER money for '21, '22, why is there a zero here?
Because it's ESER I, it's not ESER II and ESER III, which these plans are being presented for ESER II and ESER III.
Okay, thank you, it's very important that whenever you say ESER, you always say which one you're talking about, okay? So the ESER I money, which was all along the plan, and which we presented in our budget presentation, it was ESER I money that's covering that hole or potential hole. The board's already, we've already made explicit to the board in our conversations that you may not even need that next year, that may become money that if we get those 400 students back, early on in the year, this board will be having some conversation about, hey, the 400 kids came back, now what are we going to do with that ESER money that we originally put there? That is a reasonable thing to have on your radar screens, to, and hold our feet to the fire on that. So that's ESER I money, this is ESER II, and this is here based on what we see today, and this 1.2 million may be used for something entirely different, potentially even capital down the road, should we find into next, early next year, we'll know if the 400 are coming back or not, and this can be revisited at that time. You've got a lot of opportunities here, this is the foundation, this is not the last word, this is the first word, you are helping us get the application in by the deadline with this conversation.
Any other questions?
I actually have something, I didn't know if you had anything, I didn't want to interrupt you.
Quick, Grimacy. Ms. Caldwell?
What I was going to just, maybe this is just something to kind of think about, but is there any way that we can do a clause of some sort if we do the second grade teacher assistance, so because it is a temporary position, that they wouldn't have to get their bus driver's license, and the reason why I say that is because I think we'll get more applicants?
Okay, Madam, it's called, that's another good, we were asking good questions today, I really want to compliment the board, that's a very good question.
I think that's something we'd have to refer to Dr. Alvin Fells to see how that might affect.
No, ma'am, no, ma'am, I'm prepared to answer that question, if you don't mind, may it be your permission?
Certainly.
Yeah, the entire policy of requiring CDL for classified employees is under review by staff, everything, it's all on the table. We sought to address a problem, and we knew that there could be another problem created in addressing that one, and we have created a problem in addressing that one, and so we'll be bringing the board an analysis by the end of this year, an analysis of the impact of that policy versus the rewards, and, and a recommendation going forward, which we'll, we'll introduce to the policy committee, Mr. Levy, to evaluate, so that is part of it, but, but really, we've got deeper, we're going to bring a deeper dive to the board in the, in the near future on that issue.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, as I was going to say, that's going to have to go back to Dr. Alvin Fells, and then through policy.
That's correct.
So, we got, any, any other questions? Mr. Holmes? She's willing to let you speak. Ms. Thompson, any questions?
I don't have any questions, mm-mm.
All right, so we, we've covered it all, is there anything else, Dr. Locklear, Mr. Cox, Mr. Barath, Dr. Grimacy, that we should study and be prepped for, for next week?
Thank you for your feedback. We do appreciate feedback and questions, very good conversation today, compliments to the board.
Yeah, I would encourage all, now that we have time to go home and study this, for my eyes, the print was a little small, seeing this on the TV screen, so with time to go home and study it, you may have questions, and if you will refer those on, especially if they require some particular figures, such that the staff can go ahead and, and get that information for you, and, and have it ready for next week, so that we can actually do a very thorough discussion. I know, Mr. Levy, you had some, some questions that could have required some actual figures to it, so if we can, you know, send those on as you study the, the information, then it will be helpful to all of us. All right, so at this point, then, any other comments, Dr. Grimacy? I don't have a copy of the agenda, I'm assuming we now go to board comments, is that, Mr. Hensley, would you like to start us off, any comments?
I have nothing, thank you.
Mr. Dennison?
Yes, I have a comment concerning the social studies and critical race theory. I have a Vietnam veteran pin on my right lapel, and I have an American flag on my left lapel. If those of you who think I would allow more county schools' teachers to teach our children to believe our country is evil, which many of you have expressed to me, then I really think you're out of your mind, that would never happen, thank you.
Thank you, I'm Mr. Levy.
Yes, just to follow up on that, I hope this will mean that when I introduce my resolution on critical race theory, and, and trying to make sure that it stays out of our school system, that you'll certainly support it, and if you have any questions, I would welcome, Mr. Dennison, that you, that you talk to me, and that we maybe even get together to make sure that what we're, what we're trying to do is to make sure that everyone who graduates from our school system is proud of our country and understands the struggles that all of our countrymen have gone through. I wanted to also thank the staff for what is a yeoman's job in creating this presentation. I am a little concerned that we really haven't had as much time as I would like to have put into making some of these decisions, but I'm not here to, to press blame on anyone, I would have at least liked to have seen these figures about a, about a week ago, or something close to it. But my hope is that, that we will make very, very good use of this $25 million, because we are never going to see something like this again, certainly in this lump of a sum, and, and I know there's many competing interests for that money, and I do want to make sure that the, especially the members of the county commission understand that we need to all work together, so as to make sure that maybe we can add a little bit of money to this money, and we can get some projects done that we might not have been able to do, and to those who believe that $25 million is a lot of money, and it is a lot of money, I would want to remind them that we have, I believe the number is $120 million in, in money for our fiscal needs, which is backlog over many years. So this is, in a sense, in a sense, a drop in the bucket, but we have an opportunity to make at least a dent, and also to work with our, our underperforming schools, and I echo what Mr. Dennison had to say about helping our underperforming schools. Each and every time I visit, one of those underperforming schools, or one of those underperforming schools comes here for a presentation, I ask the one question, I say, what can we do for you to ensure your success? And overall, they've told us that they're going to need pre-K, and so we have to start thinking about that as a program to look at, not so much for next year, but certainly for what will be '22, '23, so that we can have a comprehensive program to give them what they need, and what, what our, what our students need. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, any comments?
No comments.
Ms. Caldwell?
I, I didn't, but now I do, I was just going to say that many school boards do not have work ses, work sessions, many of them have just regular board meetings, so you go to the meeting, and that Friday before, you get all your information, so you literally have two days, and then Monday is your meeting. So I consider us very lucky to have a, a week in advance to get, to go over this information, and I was going to say too, that before Dr. Grimacy, they only had one works, one board meeting, so we're very lucky, since you've come on board, that you give us the chance to actually digest all of this for a week, and then decide on Monday what we want to do, so I thank you for that.
Ms. Thompson?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I, I would just like to thank Dr. Grimacy and the staff for... I would just like to thank Dr. Grimacey and the staff for our presentation today. We know that it's all new information, foundation of what we need to review, and then we'll follow up and provide additional suggestions or recommendations. And I have a comment, Madam Chair, that I would like to make that's not really relevant to today, but has been disturbing for me over the past week or so. It's something about me going to Food Lion, or in Carthage, or Food Lion and Whispering Pines, or Harris Teeter, that I get a lot of people coming up to me and asking questions, or, you know, sharing concerns. So I was approached by several in our community, who were upset and surprised with negative comments made by one of our board members, following presentation of our last school video at, that highlighted Cranes Creek, that was presented on our April 12 board meeting. And, you know, we had asked for a series of school program videos that would highlight and showcase some of the great things that were being done in our schools, and we wanted to see those, because we knew that with us being virtual, that we had lost a lot of that. So as you know, we started with Sandhills Farm Life, and our New Century, and then Sandhills, and then lastly, we heard from Cranes Creek, which was great. And I had several to say that Mr. Levy had made a negative and disturbing comment on the radio, that it was similar being to Nazi propaganda. I don't know if I, this is what I was told. And I said, I don't believe what you're saying, that a board member made that type comment. And of course, they said, I will send you a clip, or I'll send you something from the radio. I don't listen to it, so I didn't know. But I guess the bottom line for me is, I've had time to reflect on that, and I apologize to the individual right then. But as I reflected on that comment, Nazi, I mean, stop it Nazi, which reflected a time in our world history of hate, evil, killing, racism, everything that you want to say within that, and associate that with our children, our principals, our schools, our teach, just the whole nine yards, is embarrassing to me as a board member. So I just want to take this time to apologize, Dr. Grimacey, and share my apology to those principals and those teachers, our little children. That should have never happened. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Holmes, are you indicating you wanted to speak?
May I? May I respond?
We're not into going back and forth with responses at this point.
I understand, but I may have a point of personal privilege to respond.
Let us finish our comments, please. Mr. Holmes, did you have comments you wanted to add?
Yeah, we've heard from two board members about things that other board members have done. What I'm wondering is why are we making these comments, instead of going to the person directly and addressing the issue with them? I just don't, I don't know if that's the way that I was brought up. You have a problem with somebody, you go talk to them. Don't go and just, you know, this passive-aggressive stuff. It's getting old.
You're so right, it is getting old, and it might be helpful if we start both sides.
Why can't we be friends?
Yeah, that's good. But I have to admit, I'd like to follow up to what Ms. Thompson has just said, because at this point, Mr. Levy, and this is, I don't mean this as a personal attack, however, I know that there have been a lot of personal attacks made via radio, but I feel like the comments that were made, which attacked the children of our schools, as at the same time you mocked the atrocities of the Holocaust, were unfortunate. And at this point...
Madam Chair, a point of personal privilege. The remarks did not in any way, Mr. Levy's remarks did not in any way put down the children of Moore County schools. You mischaracterize it as well.
Excuse me, Mr. Hensley, you are out of order.
Don't matter.
I will now entertain a motion to adjourn.
Madam Chair, must the meeting be adjourned?
Is there a second?
The motion has been made and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
I wish a discussion, I wish a discussion on the motion before we take a vote. And Madam Chair, this is an atrocity for you not to let me to respond.